All right, good evening, everybody. So, let's just try and, let's just open this up like we, like we normally would.
Okay. This is Roger Friedman, Chairman of the Hilton County, excuse me, the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. It's been a long time since we've had a meeting, I think going back to February. We're gonna call to order the August 2020 meeting of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. And Mr. Mees, if you're there, if you take the role.
I am here and be happy to call roll. Ms. Flanagan?
Present.
Mr. Swanson?
Present.
Mr. Barrett?
Present.
Mr. Friedman?
Present.
And I'm here as well, and I note that I do not see Steve Roos on the call.
No, and I actually was, I did a test meeting with him earlier today. Give me one second. All right, I think he's trying to call me. So if he, if he calls back, I'll give him one. Let's see. Okay, one thing that we're gonna be doing tonight is for, for any, any final decisions of the zoning commission. When we do these virtual meetings, instead of having anyone come in to sign the documents, we typically have a member of the, of the public body make a motion to authorize electronic signatures, and then we do a roll call vote. So, can I ask for, can I ask for one of the members to do that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, and can we, can we have a roll call on that?
Sure. Ms. Flanagan?
Aye.
Mr. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, moving on to our cases.
Excuse me, do we need to approve minute meetings?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
I move for approval of the February 10th, 2020 minutes.
I would, I have one correction. It's a personal correction for me. It's under item three, the approval of the meeting minutes from the last meeting. It says Ms. Mees seconded the motion.
That's what I already.
If we could correct my gender, that would be awesome.
Absolutely.
Just like that.
Thank you, Ann.
I was gonna get to that. Actually, we've already made that correction, so.
Thanks, Skylar.
It was just caught after it was sent out to you. We apologize.
So with that correction, I will second Ann's motion.
And I'll note that I was not attempting to abstain from voting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we're moving on. We got one little business case, 2019-20 MA, which is going to be continued to some date to be determined. I don't know if we have any estimate of when that might be, but as of right now, it's being continued to some later date. Onto new business, the first action, case number 2020-02P1 has been withdrawn, so there will be nothing tonight on that. Case number 2020-03P1. The applicant is RJK Associates. Property is located at 8915 Blue Ash Road, and the request is for a PUD. So if we could get an update on what this is about.
Yes, sir. Okay. So I do need to make a little bit of a correction in the, in the staff report that you submitted. I, I slightly misrepresented this case, although it does still fit within the PUD1 approval. So, the applicant came before this commission in 2012 requesting the development of a self-storage facility with, with some office space to the front. They were approved at that time for, for eight buildings. This is not actually a time extension of that original proposal. This is an expansion of that, of that use onto the southern property that the applicant, or excuse me, the, the storage facility owner acquired. So, this is an additional six storage buildings. And let me go ahead and pull up the presentation for this. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so again, this, because of the proposed ISR, ISR for, for this parcel, it still meets the, the PUD1 criteria. Again, the applicant, RJK Associates, is coming in front of us on behalf of 8915 Blue Ash Road. The net acreage here is 3.4 acres. The current ISR, and I'll show you this on the, on the next plan, is .75 acres, and the proposed ISR with the improvements, with the additional storage facility buildings, is actually reducing that to .64. Froze. There we go. There we go. Okay, so here we see the existing storage facility, self-storage operation. Below here is the, the Grasscore Commercial Warehouse. This is, this is proposed to be raised by the, by the applicant and converted to the redeveloped, so to speak, with, with the six additional storage buildings.
Skylar, the building has been raised, and there's already been some foundation work done, or some gravel work done to prepare for building on the site.
Yeah, just general site, just general site prep. All right, the site highlighted here is, is the subject parcel that we are, we are considering tonight. To the, to the northwest and south is surrounded by our light industrial F District. To the east, it is our E Business District, as well as our C Single Family Residential District. It should be noted through here that the property immediately adjacent to the east is, is bounded by railroad tracks. There we go. All right, and again, this is an expansion of that, of that existing facility. Here are the additional six storage buildings. These actually have a fairly low profile. They're about 10 feet in overall height. And this is the proposed additional landscaping that the applicant has submitted. It is consistent and actually in part in addition to our landscaping requirements. The applicant has already submitted to Hamilton County. There is an active permit for, for stormwater improvements on here. Other outside agencies did not have any issues or comments. Okay, and is there any questions? Before we go to the applicant?
The earthwork, earthwork permit, the revisions that they were awaiting have been taken care of? And is that correct?
They're, they are working through that process. We'll have to get an update from the applicant on where they stand with that.
And then there was a letter from fire also on July 28th that said they needed to see the plans. Has that also been taken care of?
Doug Marath, I believe, does have a copy of these plans, and we're, we're working through, through that with them as well. But there's, there's no immediate concerns.
Okay.
Skylar, I was looking at your staff report and assuming that we'd already approved this, so I did not give it a close thorough look, I guess, but it looked to me like it is generally very consistent with what we approved last time, so in general, I have no questions on that, but are there any other items that are non-compliant? I know you mentioned landscape was beyond our requirements, but is there anything else within the normal restraints of our code?
Yes, everything is compliant. Again, it's consistent with, with the first piece of this development. I can pull up the, the comments from the original approval, if you want to take a look at that. But I, I have no concerns. Again, I do apologize for, for misrepresenting this in the, in the staff report. I think this is really, this is a situation where, you know, my lack of institutional knowledge and trying to piece the history of these back together, you know, got the better of me on this one, so I do need to apologize.
I have a question for you, Skylar. I don't know if any, I'm sorry, got, got into this thing late, but is there, is there a lighting package with this program, or is it gonna be similar to what was the lighting packages on the other buildings?
I do not believe that there was a photometric plan in, in the packet. But any, any lighting on this site is gonna have to be consistent with, it's gotta have to be consistent with what's permitted in the zoning resolution.
Okay.
The other issue, I'm not too concerned about it, just given the, you know, the, the location of this property, with it being bounded on most sides by light industrial and then the railroad track.
Okay.
Additionally, the, the boundary buffer that they're putting in is, is gonna mitigate a lot of light spillage.
Okay.
Well.
That's all I got. Any question I have?
Okay. Is, is there anyone from the applicant who is joining us?
Um, yeah, the, I am the applicant and the owner. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to address the, a couple of the, the things that were brought up. The lighting will be the same as on the original.
Before you go on, would you identify yourself for the?
Okay, my name is Bob Crumdick. I am one of the owners of the self-storage facility and the contractor that made the application, RJK and Associates.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, concerning the lighting, all the lighting will be directed down, and the, the buildings face the property lines with the backsides of the buildings. There's no lights on the backside of those buildings. So there'll be almost, there will be zero spillage off that lot. Okay? And we have agreed with the fire department to add a fire hydrant, per Doug Marath's suggestion. And we have every, we did obtain the permit to do all the dirt work and demolition. So this, this is just a copy of what's already there.
Okay. Any, any questions for the applicant from any of the members?
I was wondering how you arrived at the need for six storage additional buildings?
We are 100% full with a waiting list, and those six buildings just fit the site the best. I mean, it's, the way the traffic flows, it just worked out for those six buildings.
Presumably, you could get closer to the 50% ISR without one of those buildings, or have you considered that?
Well, I mean, certainly if we stopped building buildings, we'd get closer, but I think that the original site had an ISR of .75, and so we're lowering the ISR to .64. And there's a bunch, there's more landscaping on that site now than ever was. It's, and we got rid of an eyesore. There's, there's no doubt that that old building wouldn't, was nothing special for anybody. So, you know, we could have built more buildings and got, kept the ISR up to .75 or beyond, because there is room back there to build more buildings, but we did, we did work to keep it into a PUD1 at less than .65.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I did have, Skylar mentioned that there was a set of approval comments from previous review of the project. Are those items that were conditions that might still be applicable to this? This case?
Let me, let me bring those up for you.
Serious spell, applicable.
Trying to think of what they were, and one was a dumpster enclosure. Anything else of any substance back in 2012?
Yeah, let me bring that up. Here we go.
We upgraded the railroad crossing. That's, I'm not sure that was even in there.
A lot of this had to do with, with timing of the, of the expansion. Yeah, board will grant a variance to allow dumpster to be screened by an alternate suitable material. It's not applicable.
Yeah.
Interior landscape.
The expansion that they talked about in those comments.
Yeah, I mean, the, the comment of the western and southern buffers must be maintained is shown in the illustrative site plan. That's somewhat redundant, because that's, you know, the, the landscaping plan that's submitted and approved. You know, with, with minor changes will be submitted, or it, you know, if there are any some, minor changes, that'll be submitted and approved with the zoning compliance plan and shall be maintained. The only note you may want to make is, you know, through, through discussion with the applicant, giving them a timeline for development of this, which was, which is consistent with the original approval. I don't have the applications, let me pull that up. Sir, when was your, when were you proposing to, to complete the final, the final building? Let me see here.
We lose him?
Looks like it. If he comes back in, we'll, we'll, we'll let him back. Let's see here.
Skylar?
Yes.
Is there an additional dumpster on this new site, or are they planning on using just one dumpster site?
There, there's not one indicated on the plan.
We're only, we're not adding any more dumpsters. We have all the dumpster we need.
Did you hear that other question about your estimated finish date?
Oh, sorry, my computer wasn't working. We're gonna build these three buildings this year, and we'll probably build the final three buildings next year, end of next year.
The, the proposal as, as submitted with the application was Phase 2B will be buildings 12, 13, and 14. This phase is planned to be constructed in 2022, 2023.
Could be 2021, 2022, 2023.
Yeah, well, I, limit yourself on, on development schedule.
I think looking at those conditions and talking about schedule, if we use the same conditions from last time, a five-year period, and require that the open areas be seeded, does that make sense to the applicant?
That'd be fine. We agree to that.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
No.
None for me?
Any other comments, or if not, if someone would care to make a motion?
I can move that we approve case 2020-03P1 as submitted with two additional conditions, one being that all development work in the application is completed within five years. And the second is that all areas that are undeveloped during the phasing be seeded over, and you can word that same as it was on the prior supplemental.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Mees, if you take the roll call on this?
Yeah, point, point of clarification is Mr. Swanson or Mr. Roos are voting member in this instance here.
It would be Mr. Roos on the alternate.
Gotcha. Okay.
And Roger, is there a public that's also participating in this? Do we need to open it up, I guess?
So I didn't, I didn't know if they were or not.
So the, the, the public was noticed that, about the, the change in venue to Zoom. They were, they were given an opportunity to notify us and, and would have been invited into the Zoom meeting. However, we had no takers, so.
So we're clear to go ahead?
And, and it should be, it, it should be known, this, this is being recorded right now. This, this will be made available to the public, and Mr. Evil, we, are we live streaming?
Not to Mr. Evil.
Okay, and we're, and we're live streaming right now, so this is under the, the COVID-19 protocols, or the, the governor's recommended precautions. This is as live and as public as we can make it.
Okay.
All right, without further ado, Ms. Flanagan?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Mr. Friedman?
Aye.
Mr. Roos?
Aye.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay.
If, if I may, I apologize. Mr. Roos, at the beginning of the meeting, prior to you coming on, we, the, the commission made a motion to, to, to agree to electronic signatures for the, the purpose of these approvals. Will you just go on the record saying you agree to electronic signature?
Yes, I agree to that, the electronic signature, yes.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to working with you.
All right.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is case number 2020-04P1. The applicant is Leaseman Engineering. The property is located at 7260 Eddington Drive. And this is also a PUD1. Skylar, update?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna do another screen share with you. If I can get my computer to cooperate. One second here. All right, can you guys, let's see here. Can you see that now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. It, it's not going into the, the presentation mode like it normally should, so we'll, we'll work it from this way. Okay, again, this is 20, case number 2020-04P1. Applicant is Leaseman Engineering, representing Epic Holdings at 7260 Eddington Drive. The site is just under an acre, .936 acres. Current ISR is at .52, with a proposed increase to .60 for light industrial warehousing. There is a, there's a a wholesale showroom on, on this site as well. So, here's Ariel here. This, the site right here is Epic Holdings. It's actually right in the middle of one of our industrial areas. This is the subject parcel that we're looking at. Immediately, I believe this is a landscaping or, or grounds maintenance company, and then further to the west is Nelson Stark. Let's see here. So again, it's wholly surrounded by its own district, F Light Industrial. This is the current situation on the site. We have a long, narrow warehouse and showroom along the, of the western edge of the property. The applicant is proposing fairly large expansion of the building, approximately 8,000 square feet, just shy of 8,000 square feet, for just shy of 8,000 square feet for additional warehousing. There's no major changes to the to the indicated parking spaces here. They're required to have 14. They'll be providing 15. The applicant does not have renderings for the new addition at this time, but they are proposing that it be consistent with the exterior be consistent with the existing facade of of the of our current building. Additionally, there was not a landscaping plan submitted with this site, however, I'm gonna drop this down for a second. Hang on. Yeah. There's currently, you know, quite a bit. It's it's actually even more substantial when you're looking at its street view. There are several plantings manicured landscaping as well as green buffering along the the eastern property line. And as part of the approval, I would just recommend that a landscape plan that identifies or that calls out these plantings be be submitted as part of that zoning compliance plan and to ensure that it's consistent with our resolution standards.
Skylar, are you looking for that just along Eddington Drive?
At this time, I would be, yes. I don't have. You know, we can we can discuss this, the the western edge of the property, if you'd like, where it where it's up against blue chip, because this is pretty barren. There's already a pretty substantial buffer here, and honestly, I think the buffer benefits the the applicant more than you know, it's neighbors. Streetscaping, I like I said, I expect that to be consistent with our our code once that is once that's fully, you know, accounted, you know, accounted for. But the the commission does have, you know, the authority to, you know, make that determination or to you know, waive that requirement. So it's up for discussion.
Do they have a dumpster on site there or not? I don't see one.
They do not, and there's not one indicated on the plan.
I thought I saw proposed dumpster right in the middle of the addition.
No, I'm not seeing that. Right there, that is, that's an that's a washout basin for that's a washout, temporary washout basin for concrete.
Just to the left of that. It says chain link fence with opaque slats and gates for dumpster.
Oh. Yep, I see that. Thank you.
Okay, they're gonna put it right again, okay. They mean they need to make the printing a little larger.
Yeah, that's what I get. So yes, that is shown with chain link fence with opaque slats. Okay, and yep, I can, we can discuss this full in in more detail, or we can we can open this up to the to the applicant.
I have any more questions?
Anyone else have any questions for Skylar?
Only question I have is, would the would the landscape plan to the west side of the property be in scope for this particular request? Given that the addition is going on the right side of the property, the east side?
Well, so the the there hasn't been, the this property hasn't actually been subject to our our landscaping requirement. The the building predates zoning. I believe it was built 1987, if I recall correctly. So any any of the landscaping that's that's there has has been installed by, you know, the the current owner or prior owners. Because they're raising that that ISR into the in PUD, this would be the time where they would be subject to that to that requirement.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, is is the applicant with us, Skylar?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, Jay Cretimo with Leesman Engineering is here, as well as Tyler Scott, the owner of the property.
Okay, the applicant have anything to add to the application that was made or any comments that Skylar had made?
No, Tyler, do you have any? No, I had talked to Tyler early earlier, and he said if landscaping is needed, he's okay with that. He's just in need of more more warehouse space, and he likes his location and property and is looking to expand.
Okay. Was there any discussion about the dumpster enclosure when you put the plan together?
You look at if you look at the existing, the existing location was sitting right by the drive-in door. So we just shifted it right there. It made the most sense to put it right by the new dock door and the old drive-in door. I mean, if we wanted, I'm sure we could put it on the right side closer to the east property line.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant from members of the commission?
I have one. Is there any drainage problem on the east side of that property? It looked like there's stagnant water in a ditch that doesn't seem to have much drop in any direction. Is that ever
It's an existing swale that basically wraps around, and then you see there's a culvert that takes it to back to the regional detention fund. I can't speak if they've had issues in the past. I don't know if Tyler's on to that, but it's a pretty defined swale coming down there.
Any other questions?
There's actually, there's actually a drain adjustment right there too, which kind of buffers, which is why we held the building 20 feet off the side property line.
Okay. Hearing no other questions. Thank you, sir. Is Skylar, has anyone indicated from the public a desire to speak on this particular application?
No, sir. Actually, I I think I fielded one call. It was just you know, a a simple, hey, what's going on here kind of kind of question. No, no concerns.
Okay. Well, then, anyone on the commission care to make any comments or to make a motion?
I'll move we consider case number 2020-04P1 with the condition that a landscaping plan be submitted, which meets staff approval and that the streetscaping be consistent with code.
I'll second it.
May I request a modification to that language instead of consistent with code, say, consistent with Sycamore Township zoning resolution?
I'm sorry, can say what?
Instead of instead of saying code, say, consistent with Sycamore Township zoning resolution.
I would make that modification of the motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Mr. Rus, I presume you second that with the
With a modification, yes, I second it.
Okay. Any further comments or questions by any member of the commission?
Yes, so we don't have, we don't have building elevations or any plans. I know it was described to us that it would match the existing building, but should we add that as another condition of approval?
I I think that that's a good point, quite frankly.
Yeah, that that'll have to be submitted for, you know, prior to prior to submitting for zoning certificate. So a condition of of approval should be that that the the addition be the facade be consistent with the existing building.
I think Bill's was a little broader than that even though the not just the thought with the the facade and the height and other attributes.
Yeah, do do we know the height of the building relative to the existing building? Will they be the same?
It'll it should sing it'll single slope back towards the existing building, not any. I would say it's going to be consistent with the existing height, but it will single slope back towards the existing building. So the right, the east side will be a little bit higher, but meet the existing building.
Okay.
So his height's going to be 20 feet, is that right?
That's yeah, approximately 20 feet.
Yeah, I just think we should add to our our motion. I would propose that we add to our motion some language that the the facade has to be consistent relative to height and character and building materials with what the existing building has.
I agree.
Yeah, if I could ask clarification on the landscape, the way the motion reads right now, we're saying streetscape landscape would be improved, I guess, to meet current zoning resolution. If if I'm correct, and I'm I'm fine with that. And then the boundary to the west, I guess, we're not addressing that at all in landscape, and I'm okay with that too. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Yep, that's that's as I understood it to be, but I do think we need a clarifying motion to add Mr. Mies's comments and and suggestions.
Yeah, I would move that we consider this case number 2020-04P1 with the previously mentioned landscaping condition and also add to that a condition that the the buildings be consistent facade and in height and in materials with the existing buildings.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Cover it sufficiently, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further comment? If not, Mr. Mason, you would take the role?
Of course. Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Hi.
Mr. Friedman?
Hi.
Mr. Rus?
Hi.
And I will vote yes as well.
Good. Matter passes and excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you to the applicant for participating.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Skylar, do I know it's been a while, do the trustees have anything to report?
Other than be safe and and maintain a positive outlook in these trying times, I I don't think so. I do have a brief report I I'll share with you that I that I submitted to the trustees, if you would like.
Yes, please.
Okay. So at the at the last board of trustees meeting, I shared with them just just some basic stats. I'm offering this to you without any any deep analysis. I wanted to take a snapshot of what our our six-month you know, status update was for for 2020 versus 2019. Obviously, this is a an abnormal year for for Sycamore Township, for the for the world, really. But just just looking at, you know, some of the the key, you know, indicators of of activity, you know, development activity for for our community, residential permits, they they're actually on track from from last year. What I plan to do in future updates is actually break this out into new residential versus versus additions versus versus accessory structures, because they're all kind of mixed in right now. But we are you know, at this, you know, a little past the half-year mark. You know, they're, you know, I'm not too worried about that. Obviously, our our major hit is in our commercial sector. Commercial activity is down significantly. So those are when it comes to violations, this is actually a hard one to compare. It looks like we are down quite a bit in property maintenance. Really, this has more to do with how we're tracking violations in prior years. The Ohio Underground Protection Services, every time they generated a ticket for for Sycamore Township, that also that in turn generated a complaint. So we just assumed everything coming from oops was was a complaint. We're still following up on those to just make sure that, you know, the development is or that type of activity activity is is proper, but we're not treating them immediately as complaints. So again, this is, I'm going to have to do kind of more of a deeper dive and and, you know, remove the you know, those those oops complaints from prior years. And then finally, our our zoning cases, BZA is a little slower than prior years, but 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 not too significantly. The majority of these are residential applications. Honestly, a lot of these have to do with with decks and fences, that sort of thing. If if I can actually, you know, finish up the the land use steering committee process and and submit to you and and the trustees our updated land use plan, I'd also like to make some proposals proposals for changes to our zoning code that would grant a little more lenience to 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 property owners for how they place fences, which will actually drop cases for BZA. And then finally, as as I'm sure this group is aware, our our zoning cases for for zoning commission are significantly down. We haven't had, you know, a substantial development this year. You know, I think our our first case of this year was actually a a sign modification for an existing office park that was in development. So, you know, while I've been working with our our business community and our developers, there's a lot of interest in in certain projects. No one's quite pulled the trigger to or ready to come in front of this, you know, this body.
Skylar, do you feel that's strictly related to the COVID situation?
That's hard to say to to some extent. I I'm gonna, for the time being at least, I'm going to put a lot of blame on that. You know, there, when I first came to Sycamore Township, the thing I heard about on on a weekly, if not daily basis, was office space, office space, office space. And then COVID hit. And everybody's freaking out because, okay, we can't be in our offices anymore. We've got to, we've got to do Zoom meetings. We've got to, we've got a social distance. You know, so, you know, I I think You know, so, you know, I I think the business community and and, you know, this might, this might open up to an interesting conversation with some of you. I think everybody's hesitant right now, and and we're all in a holding pattern to to see where this falls. You know, I I've read various articles that talk about, you know, this, this may this may initiate or trigger a, you know, a shift in how we do business, and and more companies are now open to you know, working from home. Conversely, I I've I've read some some recent articles, even even citing some major tech companies that are now talking about, well, there was there was actually this this productivity boost when, you know, people were first exposed to working from home, and, you know, they they saw a boost in production. But now we're starting to see, you know, a drift and and that that loss in production, and they think that long term, you know, we're going to be shifting back to traditional office space. You know, and the way we use office space may change as well. There's a lot of companies that that like the 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 shared spaces idea, you know, collective, you know, collective workspaces. And now, because of social distancing, well, now everybody, maybe we need you know, our our own offices. So there's just too many different ways that that, you know, the the current pandemic is is shifting opinions. You know, the the dust hasn't settled yet. So this is, this is very much a wait and see kind of kind of situation, as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, the other thing, this data, again, this is, this is me grabbing some 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 quick stats about about our happenings. I think we need to do a deeper dive on this. I I plan to in the coming months, start breaking these out into subcategories and also start going back further historically, five years, ten years, and and really start looking at where the trends are for you know, for Sycamore Township and, you know, also the operations of, you know, my department. So, and I'll, again, when when there are findings, I'll I'll make presentations to this group.
Thank you very much. If we have a next meeting in September, it will be on September the fourteenth, correct?
Yes, sir.
We don't, we don't have any, do we have anything yet that'll be coming before us that night?
Uh, no, I don't believe we do. I have been working with with one developer who is interested in doing a a zone change for for our residential development. They will be required first to 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 host an open house. And if in fact they do that, we'll we'll be putting a case together for for the commission.
Okay. But as of right now, we don't know anything that's coming up. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Anyone? Anyone?
Bring one up if you're, if you're, if you're searching here. Skylar, you mentioned land use plan. Is is that still in the works, or do you have everything back? And what's sort of the outlook on that?
So we we got through a cer- significant amount of our of the topics that we wanted to cover from a from a pure land use, you know, review and discussion. We we got through all the different areas of the of the township and and talked about some some key policy areas. The idea is that we were trying to we were trying to flesh out the the document with, you know, additional discussion and, you know, parks and open space, transportation. You know, environmental management, the those sorts of things. We didn't really get to 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 really discuss the those other topics. And, you know, with and with as difficult as it's been to to hold, you know, public meetings, we we've put those on hold. Really, that that group really works best, you know, Shrett style, where you're, you know, you have, you have maps on the table, and everybody is is kind of working shoulder to shoulder and, you know, pointing at spots on the map and saying, hey, what about this? So, you know, the 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 current environment hasn't really wanted itself to to having that type of meeting. I think what we're going to do is as soon as I have an opportunity is to is to put the land use portion of that together and submit it to, you know, commission for review, knowing that it's really just the framework for, you know, a a more comprehensive vision down the road. And we'll actually create an opportunity with this, you know, your 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 land use plan or your comprehensive plan for your for your community should be a living, breathing document. You know, the last thing I want is to to put all this work into a document and then put it up on a shelf and never look at it again. You know, if we if we put this out as, you know, first edition or second edition, what have you, knowing that we've got projects we need to get right back to in the in another year or so. You know, it it just, it just gives us motivation to do that. And like I said, keep that, keep that document alive. Another interesting issue is the 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 future of the Montgomery Montgomery Road properties that are owned by the township. There's about seven and a half, seven and three quarter acres of of properties that have been cobbled together over time by by the board of trustees. The the trustees
That's south of
What's that?
Where are they?
Oh, Montgomery.
That's that's south of Kenwood Road, correct?
So that's actually, that would be west of Kenwood Road.
Taco Bell. Taco Bell.
Yeah, old Taco Bell, Pet Boys. Basically, the 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 fitness center all the way over to the property of budding Redstone. So there's a, like I said, a little over seven and a half acres there. There's been a lot of interest from developers on on acquiring that property, and instead of just handing it to you know, one developer, we've made the determination that we need to do a a master site plan and evaluation of those sites. So we're currently under contract with Stewart Land Use. And again, this is kind of timing sensitive with you know, COVID protocols and everything, but we plan on doing several focus groups with you know, different stakeholders in in the community, residents, business owners, actually, you know, fielding interest from developers themselves in in separate focus groups, and then bringing you know, representatives from each of those groups together to do a a Shrett on site to develop a a full master site plan. And then from there, developing the RFP to put it out there for for future development. And all of this, actually, phase one of this is what I should have started with is a a market analysis by an economist we're contracted with, Doug Harnish from Dayton. So he's evaluating the site right now. And we're we're waiting to to see his findings. So basically, we're looking at not just that site, but but the general area, what you know, what's sustainable on that site from a from a market standpoint? So any questions about that?
Nope.
So that that master site plan will also be incorporated into the land use plan.
All righty. Nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Anyone? Anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all. It was great seeing you all.
I'm sorry I was late, guys. I was, I I came, I signed in quarter till, and then I lost the link.
No worries.
The merits, Bill.